We have a quorum and it's 10 o'clock.
Okay, good morning and welcome to the City Planning Commission Remote Public Meeting. Brian Sner, the Senior Director of Land Use and Commission Operations, will now outline the general information about the remote public hearing and how to participate.
Thank you. Good morning. Verbal testimony may be provided online or by calling in on your telephone. If you wish to speak, you must first register through the NYC Engage portal. If you wish to access the hearing, please register through the upcoming meetings page on the portal. A link to joining the hearing is on the landing page. After you register, please do not close the landing page without first clicking on the link. If you're accessing the hearing via phone and wish to speak, you must first register with the dial-in participant hotline. The numbers are listed on the screen. If one of the numbers is busy, please try another one. The meeting ID is 618-237-7396. Press pound to skip the participation ID. The password is the numeral 1. The phone number is also posted on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal. Please note that no matter how you are accessing the meeting, you must first register if you wish to speak. Those accessing the meeting online will have the option to turn on their camera while giving testimony. When it is your turn to speak, you will be notified and promoted to panelist. This will allow you to unmute your microphone and grant you the ability to turn on your camera. Please listen closely for your name to be called. There will be a short period where it will appear that you're no longer in the meeting. Don't be alarmed. You should rejoin the meeting as a panelist. If you're accessing the hearing via phone, your name will be called from the list of registered speakers. Once your name has been called, you will be given the temporary ability to unmute yourself. You do this by pressing star six on your phone. For those listening to the hearing through the online live stream, who have not yet registered to speak but wish to do so during the hearing, they must first register to speak through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal. It's not possible to testify through the online live stream. For those accessing the hearing via phone who have not yet registered to speak but decided they wish to do so, they must also first register to speak through the dial-in participant hotline that I described a moment ago. Speakers are limited to three minutes of testimony. There are a few exceptions to the three-minute time limit. Elected officials are accorded the courtesy of jumping to the front of the queue and are not limited to three minutes. If consecutive translation services are being used, the time will be extended to five minutes. And if an applicant team with three or more speakers wishes to make a team presentation, the team will generally be allowed a total of 10 minutes. The chair will announce when the time limit is reached. Please be mindful of background noise during your testimony. Make sure that if you're watching the proceedings via livestream, your livestream is muted when you begin your testimony. Otherwise, you will hear an echo. If you wish to submit written testimony, it should be submitted to the Department of City Planning. Mail-in and address can be found on our website, planning.nyc.gov. Lastly, please note that this remote public hearing is being recorded.
Good morning and welcome to the City Planning Commission Remote Public Meeting. Mr. Secretary, please begin the meeting.
Thank you, Chair Lamont. Morning Commissioners. Good morning all. This is the City Planning Commission Public Meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage portal. Today is Wednesday, October 20th, 2021. I will now call the roll. Chair Lamont.
Here.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yeah.
Commissioner Capelli.
Here.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Here.
Commissioner Dweck.
Here.
Commissioner Edie.
Here.
Commissioner Knight.
Here.
Commissioner Levin.
Here.
Commissioner Marine.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz is absent. Commissioner Rampaschad.
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, October 6th, 2021, and special meeting of Monday, October 18th, 2021.
On the minutes, I move for their approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any approve, opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved.
The next item is scheduling. Calendar numbers 1 through 8, we have resolutions for adoption. Scheduling Wednesday, November 3rd, 2021, for remote public hearing to be held through the NYC Engage portal.
On the resolution, I move for its approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolutions are adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the reports section on page 18. Reports, citywide, calendar number 9. In a matter of an application for zoning text amendment concerning citywide hotel text amendment, for favorable report on calendar number 9. Chair Lamont.
I vote yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Since the certification of this proposal, I have expressed concerns about the need, timing, and impact of a citywide special permit for hotels. The land use rationale was questionable at best, and the underlying motivation in creating a citywide special permit for hotels suspect. And I continue to maintain those thoughts and concerns and feel confident that raising those issues contributed to a robust discussion and debate on this important citywide issue. The highlighting of these concerns, however, and through the land use public review process, also revealed a different take on this proposal. Most significantly for me, a different take by the community I am here on this panel representing and whose voice I am always proud to carry in these discussions. Over the course of this long process, which brings us to today, I was reminded that every citywide initiative has a real local impact. Applying that to this proposal, I cannot ignore the fact that Staten Island has had its experiences with both good, smart hotel development that builds community and irrational, ill-planned hotel development with no likelihood of success, undermining any larger planning vision and detrimentally affecting day-of-day quality of life, making victims out of areas that they are built in. Those who live in neighborhoods like Travis and Port Richmond know this story only too well. I understand that there are always good actors and bad ones in every industry and always and supporting or opposing changes in how we make decisions about their existence in our neighborhoods can't be interpreted as disrespecting those who always do the right thing. It is clear to me that having some mechanism to require participation and input and debate from grassroots surrounding community and from elected officials who play roles in the land use process and are ultimately accountable to their constituents is a priority for Staten Island. Embracing all of this and knowing how I feel personally and the concerns I continue to have, I can't think of a proposal that has been before us that has me more at odds with even my own community, a less dramatic but equally challenging land use Sophie's Choice of sorts. So as I make my choice, I do so prioritizing the role I am designated to play on behalf of my own, my home community. And while I don't give up my concerns previously articulated through the process, I don't want to ignore those neighborhoods who have been negatively impacted by such development or those neighborhoods potentially next in line. And I don't want to vote in any way that denies the elected officials of any of our communities the opportunity to weigh in on planning and development and the introduction of this use in their districts. The report prepared for us on this has done a very effective job in providing a roadmap as to why this should be approved. And I want to acknowledge those who drafted it. And there's no question that despite my ongoing concerns, I appreciate the analysis and recognize that it supports the concerns of the borough I am on this panel to represent. So reluctantly, I vote yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
I vote yes.
Commissioner Edie.
I'd like to first thank the staff of the department for their dedication and professionalism in taking the time to explain and go through in detail the rationale behind this proposal. While I understand and appreciate some of the concerns, I'm not convinced that this is the correct approach. I believe that while not perfect, the current regulations create the proper balance, and therefore I vote no.
Commissioner Knight.
I have considered the testimony given by the many residents of communities concerned about the proliferation of hotels that are out of context with neighborhood character, conflict with adjacent uses and residents, and affect future development of a surrounding area in ways that are undesirable. In these cases, a public review process can support communities in shaping the future of its built environment and neighborhood conditions. I am troubled that the proposal specifically exempts hotels built for transitional housing or homeless shelters as those uses also affect the character of a neighborhood and should be subject to a public review process too. I'm concerned that in a post-COVID recovery period, that limiting the development of new hotels in the city's major business districts could have potential adverse impacts on the hotel and tourism industry and could contribute to slowing economic growth in New York City and the region. I would like to have had included in this proposal a sunset clause that enables reexamination of the effects of the proposal when the hotel and tourism industry is projected to recover. Despite these concerns that I have with the proposal, I vote yes with the hope that modifications can be made in the city council that address the issues that I, as well as others, have raised in this process.
Commissioner Levin.
Special permits do play a role where a zoning framework reflects the priorities for a particular area. The Hudson Yards rezoning, which was approved without a special permit, targeted the block south of Port Authority for office development, and we ended up seemingly overnight with five hotels on one block. That was not what the planners intended. I voted in favor of special permits for hotels in the past in areas where we're creating special zoning for a special district focusing on local concerns. And I voted in favor of the M1 Hotel Text Amendment. But the strongest testimony we heard here concerning this rezoning, in my mind, amounts to protection of a particular segment of an individual industry at the expense, according to the EIS, of growth in other segments across the city in other areas. There might be good policy reasons for doing that, but that is not a land use rationale, which is what concerns us here. The other strong testimony came from communities across the city arguing that they should have a say concerning development in their areas, that developers should be held accountable, and that people should have their voices heard. I absolutely agree, but they weren't talking just about hotels. They were talking about our as-of-right land use approach. There are ways in which that system might be considered, but this isn't it. I truly credit city planning staff with drafting a very strong report that faces all of these issues squarely. You almost turned my no into an abstention. But I have to be true to my own thoughts as this process has evolved, and I will vote no.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 9. Calendar number 10, citywide. In a matter of an application for zoning text amendment concerning health and fitness citywide text amendment. For a favorable report on calendar number 10. Chair Lamont.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
I continue to have misgivings that this text amendment might allow more of the commercial sex establishments masquerading as massage parlors, or at least reduce our ability to control that problem. However, I guess on balance, you know, the benefit to the small businesses may well outweigh the risk. And I'm somewhat reassured by the increased enforcement that was discussed when this came to us in the hearing. So on that basis, I vote yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Well, first I want to thank the staff at the department for the time that they put in addressing concerns that I had expressed about this proposal. It's clear that the health and fitness industry is an important one in the lives of all New Yorkers. The testimony provided at the public hearing also affirmed the fact that so many of those who make up the industry are talented, hardworking, and dedicated businesspeople who help create neighborhoods and support a healthy lifestyle for those who interact with them. But for me, this issue was never about that category of professional, nor do I see the existing special permit as a scarlet letter to those who have chosen a path in the field. As I mentioned in my vote on the hotel special permit, the permit exists for many reasons, not the least of which is to enable communities to participate in the process of citing and enabling them to contribute to the planning process of what they need most and what they don't. On Staten Island, there are numerous businesses that fall into the category subject to the special permit. It has not been a hindrance to business openings or to their success. No one sees this as being an attack on the legitimate licensed professionals who run, manage, and perform important skills inside these establishments. But we also know that there are those who participate in illegal activity using these locations as the scene of the crime. And those facilities create a nightmare for the communities that host them and have a negative impact on the health and safety of those who live, work, and enjoy those commercial strips. As I mentioned, the special permit provides elected officials, community boards, planners, and neighbors the opportunity to weigh in on these business openings and off in their operations. I don't believe anyone is well-served by eliminating those opportunities. And I support the special permit currently in place. And while I acknowledge that all of our neighborhoods are different, I know that this is important to the borough I am representing on this panel, and therefore I vote no.
Commissioner Dweck.
I vote yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 10. Citywide, calendar number 11. In a matter of an application for a zoning text amendment concerning Fresh 2 zoning text amendment. For a favorable report on calendar number 11. Chair Lamont.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 11. Borough of the Bronx, calendar numbers 12 and 13, CD1, calendar number 12, C210398ZSX. Calendar number 13, C210399HAX. In a matter of applications for a special permit, UDAP designation and disposition of city-owned property concerning win powers. For favorable reports on calendars numbers 12 and 13, Chair Lamont.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 12 and 13. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers 14 and 15, CD6, calendar number 14, C210119ZMK. Calendar number 15, N210120ZRK. In a matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 506 Third Avenue. For favorable reports on calendar numbers 14 and 15, Chair Lamont.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 14 and 15. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers 16, 17, and 18, CD2, calendar number 16, C210462ZMK. Calendar number 17 is withdrawn. Calendar number 18, N210463AZRK. In a matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning the special Brooklyn Navy Yard District. For favorable reports on calendar numbers 16 and 18, Chair Lamont.
I vote yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 16 and 18. Borough of Manhattan, calendar numbers 19 and 20, CD2, N, no, excuse me, calendar number 19, C210422ZMM. Calendar number 20, N210423ZRM. In a matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning the SoHo-NoHo neighborhood plan. For favorable reports on calendar numbers 19 and 20, Chair Lamont.
I am just so pleased to be able to cast my vote in support of the SoHo-NoHo neighborhood plan, one that will bring housing to the centrally-located, jobs-rich communities. This action will facilitate the creation of up to an estimated 3,500 homes, of which 900 will be permanently affordable homes, enough for some 1,800 New Yorkers through New York City's mandatory inclusionary housing program, the most progressive inclusionary housing program in the country. The SoHo-NoHo neighborhood plan stands for the idea that with focused planning and robust public dialogue, all neighborhoods across the city can play a part in the solutions to the planning challenges that we as New Yorkers face. By bringing flexible and modern zoning to these stark mixed-use neighborhoods, the plan significantly advances New York City's equity and inclusivity goals, helps address our severe and ongoing housing crisis, and serves to speed New York City's economic recovery. Critically, this initiative affirms that historic preservation and continued growth can be mutually beneficial, especially with sensible urban design controls to help weave the new into the historic fabric. It also offers meaningful support for the arts in a public-oriented way while recognizing the continued contribution of artists to the vitality of SoHo and NoHo. This plan has benefited greatly from years of public input at stakeholder meetings, both in person and virtual. Here, I want to thank the community and the local stakeholders for their engaged participation and thoughtful input. I also want to recognize the work of several divisions of the Department of City Planning. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to the Manhattan Borough Office Team, led by the amazing Sylvia Lee, and who has worked tirelessly to turn public feedback and suggestions into a well-balanced plan. I also want to thank Council's Office, Environmental Review, Neighborhood Studies, Strategic Planning, Technical Review, and the Urban Design Divisions, among so many others, who brought both talent and passion to creating this neighborhood plan. Outside of city planning, recognition has to go to several of our sister agencies, including HPD, DCLA, DOT, and Sanitation, as well as to Manhattan Borough President Gail Brewer for her dedication to our public and stakeholder engagement efforts. I also want to extend my sincere appreciation for the extensive involvement of City Council Member Margaret Chen, whose commitment to equity and modernized zoning was central to getting us to where we are today. So I very proudly vote yes on this proposal.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Well, I fully subscribe to the remarks of the chair. This has been a zoning proposal that has been long in discussion, I dare say decades. I fully support the aspirations of this text amendment, these text amendments. And I too want to salute the departments within city planning, as well as the other public agencies and officials previously mentioned. I vote yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Adopting the sentiments of the chair and the vice chair, I vote yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
I vote yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Also echoing the comments of the chair and the vice chair, I vote yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
This rezoning has been a very long time coming, and I credit the Borough President and Council Member Chen and our former leader Carl Weisbrod for finally facing up to the outdated zoning in this area and starting work on its update going as far back as 2015 and maybe even before that. The proposal before us still, in my mind, has significant flaws. I do think that it's calling for too much of an upzoning in the opportunity areas and in particular does too little for affordable housing and in particular may encourage too much commercial development. I'm concerned that we're proposing basically to undo the special permit. I believe that the special permit for large-format retail should remain in the rezoning. I'm concerned about the JLWQA conversion fee and the Arts Fund. I think the fee is too high. I think it burdens the few remaining JLWQA tenants who have stayed throughout this long history without recognizing the benefits that others have obtained by converting their spaces in SoHo-NoHo. I think the Arts Fund mechanism needs serious work. And I worry that we are in fact undermining the integrity of the historic districts. So all of that adds up to an argument in favor of abstaining here. But I do think this is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to update a zoning regime that time has passed by. And I don't believe that at this point in our process, the significant imperfections that I see should hold things up. I think the best thing to do here is to send it along to the city council in hopes that some of the issues I see will be shared there and may be improved upon. I vote yes.
Commissioner Marine.
I support the comments of everyone that has made comments. I happen to agree this is a long time coming. I do remember a conversation with Margaret Chen in 2015 when House reappointed, and the question was called for the study of the NoHo-Sohho community. So I am very happy to see that this has been finally brought to the table and vetted, and I am very happy to vote yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 19 and 20. Borough of Manhattan, calendar numbers 21 through 26, CD1. Calendar number 21 has been withdrawn. Calendar number 22, C210438AZSM. Calendar number 23, N210439ZRM. Calendar number 24, N210445ZAM. Calendar number 25, N210441ZAM. Calendar number 26, M130053BZSM. In a matter of applications for special permits, zoning text amendment, and authorizations concerning 250 Water Street. For favorable reports on calendar numbers 21 through, excuse me, 22 through 26, Chair Lamont.
Yes, I vote yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
I continue to be concerned about the amount of bulk transfer that's happening on this particular project and the fact that calls for that to be reduced have not really been addressed, and for that reason, I vote no.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Martin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rappaport.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendars numbers 22 and 23, and calendar numbers 24 and 25 have been adopted, and calendar number 26 has been adopted as modified. Calendar number 27, our last voting item for this morning commissioners. Borough of Staten Island, CD3, N220010RCR. In a matter of an application for the grant of a certification concerning 450 Robinson Avenue. For adoption on calendar number 27, Chair Lamont.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Martin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rappaport.
Yes.
Calendar number 27 has been adopted. Thank you, commissioners. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page 40. Borough of Queens, calendar number 28, CD14, C200299ZMQ. A public hearing in a matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning Beach 79th Street self-storage rezoning.
I understand there will be a 10-minute team presentation. Let me just say, though, that as we begin, we ask those who are testifying to limit their remarks to three minutes, after which you will be muted. Please also let me say that while we welcome the opportunity to hear your comments, we ask that courtesy and decorum be observed at all times during your testimony. Okay, so we can have the team presentation now.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Rachel Skoll, and I'm an associate at Greenberg Charic. We represent the applicant 79 Arvin Development LLC, owner of an approximately 107,000, 107,500 square foot development site at Block 16100, lots 14, 18, and 20, on the north side of Rockaway Freeway at the terminus of Beach 79th Street. I am joined today by Ari Kaufman on behalf of ownership, Greg Fleischer from Capital Environmental Consultants, and Abby Reto from BHP. Our client purchases property in 2018 and plans to convert the existing 34,500 square foot building on the site to self-storage and to construct a new approximately 73,000 square foot self-storage building on a vacant portion of the site. Instead, we are pursuing the proposed rezoning, which would increase the FAR available on the site from 1 to 2. Next slide, please. This would allow the existing building seen here, housing seven industrial tenants with approximately 55 employees, to remain. Next slide, please. And a new approximately 146,000 square foot self-storage building to be constructed on a vacant portion of the site seen here. Next slide, please. The proposed development site is located on the north side of Rockaway Freeway and the above-ground subway tracks at the terminus of Beach 79th Street. Next slide, please. It fronts on Rockaway Freeway and backs on Barbados Basin and is adjacent to Branders Creek to the west. Next slide, please. The site's surrounding area is largely industrial, and residential uses to the south are cut off from the site by the above-ground subway tracks and vacant parcels. Next slide, please. The proposed rezoning would rezone a portion of an existing M11 district to an M12 district. Next slide, please. It would overlap with portions of city-owned property that make up the adjacent street and sidewalk and Branders Creek. Approximately 16% of the rezoning area is made up of city-owned land, 2% owned by another private party, and 82% is applicant-owned. Next slide, please. The new building except entrances would be raised above flood hazard levels, and its entrances would be floodproofed. Parking would be on the ground level beneath the occupiable portions of the building. The building would be approximately 90 feet tall from grade and would have six floors of self-storage units, containing approximately 950 climate-controlled storage units of various sizes. Next slide, please. We will also be repaving the property's driveline with permeable pavers, planting a wetlands mitigation area adjacent to Barbados Basin pursuant to a DEC wetlands permit, adding landscaping at the front of the site, and adding picnic tables adjacent to the wetlands area. Pursuant to DEC's voluntary brownfields cleanup program, we have a plan in place to clean up hazardous materials at the site that have resulted from the site's 100 prior years of industrial use. Without the proposed rezoning, next slide, please, without the proposed rezoning, we could have a total of 107,500 square feet of self-storage on the site. The proposed rezoning represents an increase of approximately 38,500 square feet of self-storage on the site and would allow us to keep existing industrial uses. The proposed rezoning area makes up a discrete area separated from low-density residential areas and more pedestrian-focused streets, allowing the area to support higher-density industrial development without disturbing nearby uses. The uses immediately surrounding the proposed rezoning area are industrial nature and have been since before the adoption of the 1961 zoning resolution. Next slide, please. We had the opportunity to make a full presentation to Community Board 14's Land Use Committee, and the committee voted unanimously in favor of the application. Unfortunately, we did not have the chance to present at the full board, but the full board's vote was 14 in favor, 12 against, and 5 abstentions. We believe some of the votes against and the abstentions were because of concerns we had not presented the application to local civic associations. Members of Rockaway Beach Civic Association were very vocal at the full board meeting, but the Borough President, who was formerly the council member for this district and issued a favorable recommendation on the application, said at our hearing that he would not expect us to have met with RBCA, as this property is not in the area they represent. Nevertheless, since the full board meeting, my client has reached out to and had positive conversations and meetings with representatives of RBCA and the president of part of the Rockaways, and has offered to meet with both groups. We also spoke with Queens DOT regarding the community board's request for changes to its traffic patterns at the site. The deputy commissioner of Queens DOT said they were well aware of this community request as it predates the project, but they have no plans at this time. And now I'll pass it to Ari Kaufman.
My name is Ari Kaufman. I'm the developer of the project. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I grew up in Queens, where my dad was a rabbi for over 45 years. I now live about 15 minutes away from the site. I'm very familiar with the area. I've been a developer for approximately 30 years. I've developed storage elsewhere in our state and out of state as well. As Rachel said, we bought this property in 2018, January. We've been working now for all that time, almost four years, coming up with a development plan. This is one of the most complicated sites I've ever worked on. There's over 100 years of industrial contamination right along wetlands, working with DEC. We've come up with, in the brownfields cleanup program, we've come up with a program that runs literally into hundreds, many hundreds of pages, perhaps thousands of pages. We're going to be cleaning up the site. We're going to regenerate the wetlands. We're going to be doing plantings and permeable pavers and many, many other things that are going to both make it clean and restore the wetlands in the surrounding area. As for storage, it is severely lacking in the Rockaway Peninsula. It is almost hard to believe how lacking it is. We did a study with Colliers, which is literally the gold standard of the industry. They said the immediate area needed 700,000 square feet of storage. It only has about 40,000 square feet. The man I spoke to said he's never seen such a storage-deprived area in all his years. The 40,000-foot facility that's out there is at great and subject to flooding. Hours will be elevated, as Rachel said, to make it floodproof. One other storage facility has been approved at 10602 Rockaway Beach Boulevard, but even if it is built and ours is built together, that would still leave about 424,000 square feet of unmet demand in the three-mile catchment area, and this is all according to Colliers. So who uses storage? The answer is, first of all, people in smaller homes, particularly people in affordable housing units. There are many, many affordable housing units in the area, and I believe over 4,000 are being built now as we speak. Who else uses storage for people in transition? It's military people deploying abroad. It's anybody moving. It's people going safe through a divorce. And then the last 25% are typically small businessmen. It's every electrician, every gardener, every plumber, anybody with an Amazon business, an eBay business, and a lot of artists. It's basically anyone who needs small warehousing. These individuals cannot go to a regular warehouse. A typical warehouse will not lease less than 10,000 feet, and they do not typically give you direct access to your material. You need, they bring it out with a forklift. It doesn't work for any of the small business owners I just mentioned. Storage typically is more of a job facilitator, and a really important job facilitator, but it doesn't create a lot of direct jobs. To the extent that we have direct jobs, we will hire locally. We always have. We have already reached out to the Hamel House Tenant Association to participate in future job fairs. That will allow the people there to walk to work. And I now turn things over to Greg Fleischer, our environmental and wetlands consultant.
Good morning. My name is Greg Fleischer, and I'm the principal and senior scientist at Capital Environmental Consultants. We handled the DEC wetlands permit for this application. Next slide, please. The site is complicated in that DEC's title Wetlands Jurisdiction extends 150 feet from both Barbados Basin to the north and Branders Creek to the west, leaving only a small portion of the site outside the wetlands-adjacent area. Next slide, please. As a condition of our DEC wetlands permit for the building footprint shown here, we are required to provide a 50-foot wetlands planting area adjacent to Barbados Basin on tax lots 18 and 20. This area will feature native plantings that will help restore natural habitats and control stormwater retention and runoff. We spoke with DEC about the possibility of providing public access to this area to include a footpath and a few benches for fishing. DEC has insisted that this area be kept 100% natural with no public access, and that it be fenced off. They did allow us to place a few picnic tables adjacent to the mitigation planting area for use by industrial tenants and the public. As part of our DEC wetlands permit, we will also be able to improve the site's existing driveline. However, all proposed paving will use permeable pavers. Next slide, please. We thank you for your time, and our team is happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. So are there any questions from the commission for this team? Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Kaufman, I note that there are several portions of land on your site that are owned by the city. Will you acquire those parcels or lease them? How is that going to work?
There are only two parcels that belong to the city, and they're two very, very tiny sliver lots, which separate our parcel from the sidewalk. Long history as to how that happened, and the answer is no, we will not be acquiring them. We have been maintaining them just by default. They're about 18 inches wide and about 300 feet long. They're technically part of the parks administration, but we've been maintaining them on our own just to keep the site presentable.
Yeah, well, our report says lots 24, 28, 29, 30, 28, 29, 33, 44, and 175 are owned by DECAST. So I don't know that that's larger than what you say, but I just was noting that, but I think you would.
If I could just clarify, the rezoning area includes city-owned parcels because they make up the street, the sidewalk, and the adjacent creek property. Those are not part of the development site. We do not intend to purchase those or retain those. They will not become part of the development site. The reason that they're part of the proposed rezoning area is normally when rezonings are mapped to the middle of a street, the street is not a tax lot, but here it happens to be that the streets and sidewalks are both made up of tax lots.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bernie.
Thank you. I'd just like to know more about this DEC prohibition on waterfront access. I mean, waterfront access is something we like to promote and encourage. And what was their rationale for denying it in this particular case? And do they even have that authority? I suppose they do, but.
Greg, if you want to, go ahead.
Sure. So typically, in cases like this, DEC is allowing, you know, the mitigation planting to take place here, but what they fear a lot of times is that people are going to be dumping in these areas if they have direct access to the waterfront. So here, they didn't want us to really put any public access along this particular edge of waterfront. They didn't really elaborate more than that, other than to just tell us that they were 100% against granting any access through that mitigation area to the immediate waterfront there.
That's too bad.
Yeah.
We agree. Are there any additional questions from the commission? Okay, seeing none, we will now follow our procedure of five speakers in opposition, followed by five speakers in support, going back and forth until the speaker list is exhausted. Here, I believe we only have one additional speaker in favor. And I will just note then that if there is anyone who is present that has not registered to speak but would like to speak, that now is the time to register, and you can find instructions on how to register as you were told earlier, whether online or via phone at www.nyc.gov/nycengage. So next, we will hear from Hilda Massey. I'm sorry if I got your pronunciation of your last name wrong, but you are the next speaker.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah, this is Hilda Massey. I'm one of the tenants at 350 Beach 79th Street. We've actually been in this lot since August of 2014. We moved in here. So we've been renting Unit 1, and we've just taken over Unit 2, growing our business, expanding. So we've had some conversations with the landlord about the plans that they have for the self-storage unit across from us. And I mean, it's exciting. When we heard about it, I just think it'll bring a lot of improvement to this lot. Right now, it's just kind of an open, unpaved area across from us that hasn't been used for anything since we moved in here. It's just been sitting there. So it's just, I think that will bring some, like, you know, paved driveway, more security gate access to the lot. Right now, it's just a gate that all of the tenants have few locks to that either get lost or stolen every whenever because it's just locks that we put on ourselves. So I think it'll just bring, like, it would just make us more comfortable about security to access to this lot with cameras, and I'm guessing like better gates and, yeah, and access to storage. I guess we would definitely be taking advantage of the self-storage space that will be available because we've taken over Unit 2, but the building's full and there's nowhere else to go. And it would be nice to have access to more space within proximity of where we are. And, yeah, we've, you know, dealt with the landlords, and we've had no issues. They're great people to work with. So it'll be nice to know that who's in charge of next door is, you know, is not going to change anything, and so it's just exciting.
Are there any questions from the commission? Is there anyone else present who wants to speak on this item? Hearing no one, I'll say that this hearing is closed.
Our next item, Borough of Queens, calendar number 29, CD12, N210232ZRK. A public hearing in a matter of an application for a zoning text amendment concerning 160-05 Archer Avenue.
It appears that there isn't a team presentation. Rachel Skoll is signed up to testify. Rachel?
Hello again. My name is Rachel Skoll, and I'm an associate at Greenberg Charic. We represent Archer 1 LLC in this application to allow a curb cut on a currently restricted portion of Archer Avenue, which has received the Borough President's support, as well as unanimous approval by the community board. Next slide, please. Archer 1 LLC owns 16005 Archer Avenue, located at the northeast corner of Archer Avenue and 160th Street, just north of the above-ground LAR tracks in the special downtown Jamaica District. Next slide, please. The site is currently being developed with an as-of-date 22-story building that will contain 315 dwelling units, as well as ground floor and cellar, retail, or medical use. Construction is about 70% complete, and we expect people to begin moving into the building in March 2022. Next slide, please. We would like to provide a permitted, not required loading berth for residents moving in and out of the building, as well as a retail or medical tenant as needed. The new building does not have space for a loading berth and curb cut on 160th Street because a curb cut cannot be located within 50 feet of the intersection with Archer Avenue, and the balance of the 160th Street frontage is occupied by the new building's parking garage and residential lobby. Next slide, please. Therefore, we are seeking a text amendment to create an authorization that would allow the commission to authorize curb cuts on restricted streets where a zoning lot has more than one street frontage. We are simultaneously applying for the authorization and are proposing this 14-foot-wide curb cut on Archer Avenue. Next slide, please. The authorization will require the commission to make these findings. The authorization will require the commission to make these findings related to traffic safety and flow and pedestrian safety. With regard to findings one, two, and four, the proposed curb cut would not be hazardous to traffic safety. It is expected to draw minimal traffic and it will, and its use will be pre-scheduled with a flagman present during daytime use. As a result of conversations with the community board and council member Miller, we have agreed that the loading berth would not be used during AM or PM rush hour and that any use of the loading berth by a retail tenant would take place overnight. The proposed curb cut would prevent curbside pickups and drop-offs by giving moving vans or trucks an off-street place to park. With regard to finding three, the loading berth associated with this curb cut would prevent trucks coming to the site from blocking the sidewalk or idling curbside, and the proposed flagman would ensure pedestrian safety. And finally, with regard to finding five, the proposed curb cut would not be inconsistent with the character of the existing streets gap, streetscape. The, the portion of the site's Archer Avenue frontage currently occupied, or occupied by curb cuts would be reduced from what is currently there and neighboring blocks also feature curb cuts on Archer Avenue. Thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the commission for Ms. Skoll? Commissioner Knight.
So have you had to make any modifications in light of the new busway installation?
So we have not. The busway actually terminates one block east of our site. Um, the city planning staff, actually I thank them for being proactive. They actually reached out to DOT to make sure that we would not need to adjust anything in light of the busway.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the commission? Is there anyone else present that would like to speak on this item? Since there are no other people signed up here. If not, the hearing is closed. There isn't anyone.
No, there's no further speakers.
Our next item, Borough of Queens, calendar numbers thirty and thirty-one. CD ten, calendar number thirty, C two one zero one six four Z M Q. Calendar number thirty-one, N two one zero one six five C R Q. A public hearing in a matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning one oh three dash sixteen Van Wyk Expressway rezoning.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'm asking this matter.
Thank you. All right, uh, the first speaker here will be Nick Martin, followed by, uh, oh, I'm sorry, this is a team presentation. Um, uh, the applicant team can begin their presentation.
Hi, this is Faye Ann Baton from Shell Mobile P C for the applicant. Uh, I'm just going to be the sole person presenting today.
No, I'm sorry, there's no team. Faye Ann Baton, go ahead.
No problem. Uh, good morning, Commissioner Faye Ann Baton from Shell Mobile P C for the applicant. I'll make a brief presentation for the one oh three dash sixteen Van Wyk Expressway rezoning. The rezoning application includes a zoning map change from an R three A zoning district to an R six B C two three zoning district. We're also seeking a zoning text amendment to map M I H. The rezoning would facilitate the development of a four-story mixed-use building with approximately eighteen dwelling units, which I could discuss at the end of the presentation. Next slide, please. Uh, so more specifically, the project area is located on the Van Wyk Expressway Service Road between Liberty Avenue and one hundred fifth Avenue. Um, our, the development site is approximately ten thousand square feet, which is located within an R three A zoning district. And as you could kind of see on the, the small map, um, an R six B C two three zoning district is already mapped along Liberty Avenue. Next slide, please. Now, here we can see, more clearly see the development site on the tax map. Sorry, excuse me. Um, we are lot eleven. Um, the project area also includes the rear portions of lot five through nine, which face Liberty Avenue. We are just extending the existing R six B C two three zoning district a little, uh, farther in. Next slide, please. Here you can see the site more in context with the surrounding neighborhood. Uh, block itself has a mixed-use buildings along Liberty Avenue with multifamily and one-to-two family buildings along the side streets. Uh, most of these buildings are two to three stories in height. Next, please. Next slide, please. So this slide and the following slide are just, uh, photographs of the development site. As you can see, it's a vacant, it's a vacant lot right next to the Van Wyk Expressway. Next slide, please. And then the next slide, please. Here is the zoning change map. And, uh, next slide, please. So we could quickly go through the plans. Um, we are proposing a twenty-two thousand square foot, two point two F A R, four-story mixed-use building. Uh, the cellar would consist of thirteen parking spaces. Um, we would have approximately, the ground floor would contain, uh, local retail or, uh, local office such as a law office or a doctor's office. It's undecided at this point. Um, the proposal will have approximately fourteen thousand seven hundred thirty-one square feet of residential floor area for eighteen dwelling units, uh, which would, five or six of those would be permanently, um, affordable. You could just scroll through those, the next remaining slides until we get to an aerial view. I believe at the review session, uh, Vice Chair Knuckles requested, um, more the amassing in context from view up north. As you can see, um, there are a lot of two to three-story buildings within the vicinity. Uh, we would be at four stories. Next slide, please. And this is just amassing to also show this in context. And that is my presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Baton. Yep. Are there any questions for Ms. Baton from the commission? Commissioner Levin.
Uh, yes, thank you. Since, um, Commissioner Ortiz is not, uh, with us today. She asked at the review session on Monday some questions about the viability of the proposed ground floor commercial space um, on the Van Wyk Service Road. Um, you know, it's an area that does not have other retail on that frontage, although there is, uh, uh, there is around the corner on Liberty Avenue. Um, can you tell us a little bit more about your client's plans for the ground floor space at this location and whether retail is really viable there?
The applicant was looking towards local retail. It would just be a continuation from Liberty Avenue. The building, um, adjacent to us is already a law office and it kind of extends deep down into the block. Um, so the applicant still sees that this is, uh, viable for commercial uses, either local retail or so some sort of professional office, like another law office or, um, a doctor's office, but there's no tenant in mind at this, at the specific moment.
Okay, thank you. And just one last question on the, um, affordable units. Does, has your client yet, um, selected an administering agent for the affordable units?
No, not yet. Um, they have not, but we're open to working with the community board. Uh, the community board did work, uh, vote in favor twenty-nine to one, I believe. Um, we are open to working with the community board in any suggestions for, um, an administering agent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? If not, thank you, Ms. Baton. Um, if there's anyone else interested in speaking, uh, now is the time. If we don't see anyone, then.
Speakers on this item.
Then this hearing is closed.
Next item, Borough of Manhattan, calendar numbers thirty-two and thirty-three. CD five, calendar number thirty-two, C two one zero four five three Z S M. Calendar number thirty-three, C two one zero four five four Z S M. Public hearing in a matter of applications for the grant of special permits concerning the four fifteen Madison Avenue.
Uh, Mr. Cirillo specifically asked me to mention that he is, is recused on this item. He's not present.
Thank you. So this will be a ten-minute team presentation.
This is Nick Martin with Rootin. Can you hear him?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, great. Uh, so again, I'm Nick Martin with, uh, Rootin Management Company. I'll be presenting our project at four fifteen Madison Avenue along with Amy Garlock from SOM, our architect, and Melanie Myers from Freed Frank, our land use attorney. We believe that our project is a thoughtfully and beautifully designed building that meets the many goals of the Midtown East rezoning. Next slide, please. First, it will update the East Midtown office stock. The existing building shown here on the right was the Rootin family's first commercial office building opening in nineteen fifty-five. It is emblematic of the aging office stock in East Midtown that the city was hoping to update with the enactment of the twenty seventeen rezoning. The building is sixty-five years old. It is dated and does not meet the modern office demand, given its low ceilings and numerous interior columns. We will redevelop the site with a state-of-the-art Class A office building. Our site is relatively modest at about eleven thousand six hundred square feet and it will produce a boutique office building that will add to the variety of office space in Midtown and cater to small and medium-sized businesses. Next slide. The project also provides for improved connection to transportation with the inclusion of a key eastside access entrance within the building. The eastside access and Metro North train sheds run underneath the mid-block of Madison and Park, seen in the lightly shaded red area here. A series of entrances are planned up Madison Avenue, shown with the red arrows, including the northernmost eastside access entrance at forty-eighth Street within four fifteen Madison. As the northernmost, most entrance, it is expected to be the most heavily used. And so our design focuses on improving this key transportation connection. Next slide. Finally, we looked to the, to improve the public realm by adding a distinctive public space along Madison Avenue. There are a series of publicly accessible spaces along the Madison corridor, shown here, with a gap between forty-eighth and forty-ninth Streets. The public concourse at four fifteen will complete the string of public spaces and provide for rest and respite on a particularly narrow stretch of Madison Avenue. Next slide. We believe we have designed a unique and beautiful building that thoughtfully balances the competing demands of a modern boutique office building while creating a superior connection to eastside access, improving the public realm and adding a distinctive public space on Madison Avenue. We were thrilled that Community Board Five and Borough President Brewer thought so as well with their positive recommendations. I'll now turn it over to Amy from SOM to discuss our design.
Thanks, Nick. Uh, I'm honored to be here today to talk about the design of this great project. Four fifteen Madison Avenue is defined by a bright sculptural frame that is carved out at the base to create a prominent corner public concourse. The frame also erodes as it steps up from the street and the setbacks at different levels create small tennis, uh, terraces for tenants. Overall, their regular form blurs the boundary between the building's base and the narrower tower above. First, I'll focus on the design of the public concourse itself and then I'll follow that with a description of the waivers that enable the creation of that public concourse. Next slide, please. The site organizes many different functions in its relatively small footprint. We began with the eastside access location, which was planned together with the MTA. These escalators in the yellow area of the plan take commuters under East Forty-Eighth Street and down to the new eastside access concourse below Park Avenue. The office building's elevator core, entrance lobby, and loading dock are consolidated to the northern and eastern sides of the site. And this strategically frees the corner to be used as a public concourse. The corner public concourse has two complementary functions. The northern portion is a place to relax and rest, converse with friends, enjoy art, and a meal or a cup of coffee. Next slide, please. The southern portion improves access to and visibility of the entrance to the eastside access concourse. The MTA's own studies anticipate that ninety-five percent of the commuters using this northernmost entrance will be heading to the north and west. So the doors positioned towards Madison Avenue make this path intuitive and the depth of the concourse effectively doubles and even partially covers the available sidewalk for commuting pedestrians. Next slide, please. The public concourse is located at the most prominent corner of the site, opening to both East Forty-Eighth Street and onto Madison Avenue. The ground floor of the building is double-height to ensure an airy and open feeling in the space with nearly thirty-foot-high ceilings in the concourse. Next slide, please. Along Madison Avenue, the warm white marble backdrop of the public space connects into the building lobby, expanding the impression of a public, welcoming, bright, and beautiful ground floor experience for visitors to the site, activated by the building lobby, concourse, retail, and entrance to the eastside access concourse. From Madison Avenue, the public concourse frames this entrance to the eastside access with signage coordinated with the MTA for easy wayfinding. Next slide, please. Along East Forty-Eighth Street, the concourse wraps the corner and extends to the east, reaching towards the double-height entrance to the eastside access concourse marked by a canopy and distinctive signage. Next slide, please. The amenities in the public concourse are carefully considered. Benches wrap the bases for two large artworks and a bench with an integrated back extends on the full east wall. Between these fixed elements, movable tables and chairs are sheltered from pedestrians who are moving through the concourse and in different arrangements can complement the benches and give some flexibility and dynamism to the seating configurations. An all-season retail space is at the inner corner of the concourse, activating the seating area and providing easy access for commuters. We envision this as a small space selling coffee and prepared food. Finally, signage marks the space at the corner as open to the public and open twenty-four hours. Next slide, please. The northern portion of the concourse is also defined by a paired piece of public artwork. We're showing an illustrative piece here. The final piece will also be selected or commissioned to allow for good visibility between parts of the concourse and to take advantage of the nearly thirty-foot-high ceilings in the concourse. Next slide, please. In the evening, the space will be well-lit with uplighting on the ceiling, grazing lighting, highlighting the bright marble wall, downlights on the ground plane, and feature lights at each of the benches and artwork bases. Next slide, please. The design of the marble wall itself is considered in relation to the human scale. The grooves bring tactility and detail to the concourse at eye level and highlight the beautiful, warm, natural stone texture. The marble also smooths out at the bench back for a com, comfortable seat. Next slide, please. The public space defines the base of the building and its creation is enabled by two waivers. One for a modification to heightened setback regulations and a second for modification to retail continuity and street wall requirements. With a waiver to the heightened setback requirements, we are able to fill out the tower and strategically erode the base. This enables the stepping form and lower base of the building and allows for the creation of a public concourse with ample open space at the ground floor. Next slide, please. We tested many massing configurations and the proposed massing is even shorter than some of the massings that did not require a waiver for heightened setback. You can see one of those compared here to our proposed massing in the context of the site. Next slide, please. The public concourse is also enabled by a modification to retail continuity and street wall requirements. Madison Avenue requires retail along its frontage, so we are requesting a modification to accommodate the public concourse here. In addition, Madison Avenue requires the street wall within ten feet of the property line and we're requesting a modification to accommodate the deeper concourse space and terrace above. I'll now turn it over to Melanie Myers from Freed Frank to summarize the zoning actions being reviewed today.
Uh, thank you, Amy. Uh, next slide, please. It's Melanie Myers from Freed Frank Land Use Council for our applicant. And as the chair mentioned at review session, the four fifteen project will use several techniques available in East Midtown that are really geared to revitalizing Midtown's office class. These include the public concourse before the commission today that will allow for an additional about approximately thirty-five thousand square feet in the building. The findings for the special permit focus on the prominence of the space, its contribution and relationship to the pedestrian network in the vicinity, amenities in the space, transparency and activation, and the way the design of the concourse combines the separate elements within the space into a cohesive and harmonious plan. The public concourse proposed at four fifteen epitomizes the goal set forth in the special permit. It will provide a respite on, for pedestrians at its northern portion with seating, tables, and artwork. It will provide a highly visible connection to what will be the busiest entrance of the eastside access at its southern end. And it will be located at the most prominent spot on the site to ensure that it remains an active and well-used amenity for the public. Next slide, please. And it will do all this in, in, in the base of what will be a quite beautiful, modern office building, which is the epitome of what East Midtown was, was for. We thank the commission for its consideration and are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Um, are there questions from the commission with respect to this presentation? Commissioner Levin.
Um, yes, first I want to thank Ms. Garlock for the detailed, um, discussion concerning the design of the open space. You've gone all the way toward assuaging the fears that I had articulated about this um, at the review session, but you're, so, and it does look, I, I get it now. And, um, I can understand how this is, uh, going to be, um, active and very useful and engaging space. But your images of the artwork called to mind one bad lesson that we've learned elsewhere in zoning. And that is, um, I mean, the artwork seems wonderful and the images that you've shown seem just right for this location. I know that's just a placeholder. Um, and I know that Rootin Management is very thoughtful about these things. But over in the Eastern Rail Yards, we, um, put a spot on the map for a piece of sculpture that we thought was going to be similarly airy and open. Um, and we ended up with a vessel, which completely consumes the area that is supposed to be active public space. I don't by any means mean to imply that you are thinking about the same thing here, but I think we as a commission have to be. but I think we, as a commission, have to be careful about shaping the proper dimensions of this artwork so that it doesn't gobble up the open space.
One thing, if I could, just in response to that, we certainly share your concern, and the goal is to create an art installation, which really complements the space. The drawings as part of the special permit do identify the location, so it won't be possible to completely take over the space, but certainly understand the concern.
Yeah, no, I think those dimensions, we need, the special permit needs to, you know, raise the dimensions to the ceiling as well. That's what we didn't do the last time around. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Levin. Are there any additional questions from the commission? Then I thank you guys for your excellent presentation. And our next speaker is Charlie Sandboy, to be followed by Ann Adams-Ravino.
Hi, good morning to the chair and to the commissioners of the City Planning Commission. My name is Charlie Sandboy. I'm here representing the New York Building Congress in support of 415 Madison Avenue. We believe 415 Madison Avenue is a tremendous investment in New York at this moment in history. Redeveloping the site will support the city's recovery and get the economy moving after the COVID-19 pandemic. Upgrade transit infrastructure in the MTA network and provide millions of dollars in financial support to the East Midtown Public Realm Improvement Fund, as well as the capital needs of St. Bartholomew's Church as part of the air rights transfer. 415 Madison Avenue will replace an outdated structure in the Grand Central District with a new Class A state-of-the-art tower that will attract and retain world-class companies to New York. The design responds to the Grand Central's role as a catalyst for density following the East Midtown rezoning and adds to the modernization of the Vanderbilt Corridor. Given its density, it would also be an economic generator for nearby small businesses, food establishment, and cultural institutions. While the redevelopment continues to unfold, we look forward to seeing the jobs it will support in the building industry and the multiplier effect it will have on the economies of the city and the state. This project will also promote significant private investment in public infrastructure, including connections to public transit and a new 2,400-square-feet public plaza. Redeveloping 415 Madison Avenue will advance proposed zoning changes that will enhance connectivity and safety for L I R riders as part of the East Midtown, sorry, as part of the East Side Access Project. The site is situated at the northernmost ESA entrance at 48th Street and will include a 20,000-square-foot public concourse for L I R riders. This will much improve the pedestrian experience by doubling the width of the sidewalk and support the needs of commuters and nearby workers. In closing, the Building Congress proudly supports this project, and we urge you to approve their application, a significant step in continuing the reimaginization of East Midtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Sandboy? If not, thank you for your testimony. And next, we'll hear from Ann Adams-Ravino, to be followed by Ryan Pukos.
Hello, I'm Ann Adams-Ravino, speaking on behalf of the Vestry of St. Bartholomew's Church in the City of New York, located at 325 Park Avenue. The Vestry and 415 Madison Avenue LLC are co-applicants with respect to the proposed certification to transfer unused development rights from the St. Bartholomew's Church and Community House to 415 Madison Avenue. The church building was constructed in 1918, and the adjoining community house was constructed in 1928. The Landmarks Preservation Commission designated the two buildings as an individual landmark in 1967. The certification that we are seeking would allow the transfer of 36,139 square feet of development rights from St. Bart's to 415 Madison Avenue. The Vestry obtained approval of the Landmarks Preservation Commission in 2017 of a continuing maintenance plan for the landmark buildings. The Continuing Maintenance Agreement between the Vestry and LPC contains standard provisions for periodic inspections and work that is necessary for the preservation and maintenance of the buildings. The Continuing Maintenance Agreement also ensures that the gross proceeds of any development rights transfer are used to support the preservation and maintenance of the buildings. 75% of the gross proceeds must be used for restoration and repair work. Another 5% must be placed in a dedicated account to fund future inspections and repairs. 10% will be contributed to the Episcopal Diocese of New York for the maintenance of other churches. The development rights transfer mechanism under the East Midtown Regulations is a crucial tool for ensuring the preservation and maintenance of St. Bart's. To date, the Vestry has used funds from the proposed transfer to pay for the complete restoration of the structure and exterior of the community house, including restoration of all windows. We've also paid for a completion of restoration of the remaining tile roofs and the flat roofs that required work. Currently, the restoration of the north facade of the church itself along 51st Street is underway and is unscheduled to be finished by the end of 2021. There has also been a full assessment of the electrical system and critical work to protect the buildings from damage that could result from the electrical system and the steam system has been and will continue to be a priority. We would appreciate the commission's favorable action on this application, and we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ravino, and I'm really happy to hear about the preservation and restoration work that was part of what we were aiming to achieve with this rezoning. So this heartens me to hear this. Are there any questions from the commission for Ms. Ravino? Thank you very much for your testimony. Okay, the next up is Ryan Pukos.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Ryan Pukos, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Grand Central Partnership. The Grand Central Partnership is a business improvement district serving an approximately 70-square-block area in Midtown East surrounding Grand Central Terminal. As one of the world's largest bids serving a district with 73 million square feet of commercial, residential, and retail building space, our goal is to keep our Midtown East neighborhood clean, safe, and thriving. We believe that the redevelopment of 415 Madison Avenue supports this goal in several important ways. First, the redevelopment will unlock privately generated revenue that can be used to make transit upgrades. For example, the project will enable the creation of a new East 48th Street entrance to the Long Island Railroad East Side Access concourse. Importantly, this new northernmost entrance will provide improved visibility of east-side access along Madison Avenue. It will also create pedestrian circulation space by doubling the width of the sidewalk on East 48th Street. Second, the redevelopment will enable improvements of the neighborhood's public realm, including the creation of a covered seating and retail kiosk area that provides respite for residents, workers, and visitors to the area. The project will also contribute $4.7 million to the East Midtown Public Realm Improvement Fund to support other district-wide improvements. Finally, 415 Madison addresses a long-term challenge for our district by replacing aging commercial infrastructure with a modern, efficient, and sustainable Class A office building, which was one of the most critical goals of the 2017 Greater East Midtown Res zoning. The new building will help attract and retain world-class talent and businesses that seek new construction and flexible office space. For these reasons, we support the redevelopment of 415 Madison Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pukos. Are there any questions for Mr. Pukos? Okay, thank you. Are there any other people present who would like to speak on this item?
Enough further speakers signed up.
Thank you. All right, so then this hearing is closed.
Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 34, our last hearing item for this morning, commissioners. CD1 C210444PPM, a public hearing in the matter of an application for the disposition of city-owned property concerning disposition of Seaport properties.
Thank you. There will be a three-minute team presentation.
Good morning, City Planning Commission. My name is Orion Hinckley, and I'm an Assistant Vice President in the Asset Management Division at NYC EDC. Next slide, please. Today, I'm presenting on the application to extend the South Street Seaport Marketplace lease. Next slide, please. The city acting by and through the Department of Small Business Services is the fee owner to various waterfront properties in the South Street Seaport. Next slide, please. And today, I present on the application to extend the marketplace lease, lease premises consisting of Pier 17, the Tin Building, and portions of Upland Blocks 74, 95, and 96. Next slide, please. The marketplace lease was originally entered into in 1981 and has since been amended and restated in 2013 and subsequently amended three times to add various option premises. Next slide, please. The lease consists of approximately 450,000 square feet and currently expires December 30, 2072. Since the amended and restated lease execution in 2013, Howard Hughes has rebuilt Pier 17 and is nearly complete with the reconstruction of the historic Tin Building and will have invested more than $800 million into city-owned assets since 2013. Next slide, please. This application is seeking authority to negotiate and extend the marketplace lease through 2020 or an additional 48 years on the current expiration date. An additional fair market value rent reset will be added in 2097, and we will maintain 3% annual increases in between the rent resets. Next slide, please. On September 13, NYC EDC presented to Manhattan Community Board One's Land Use Committee, and they passed a negative resolution with conditions. Since EDC has successfully negotiated additional public benefits in line with the Community Board conditions, HUC has agreed to fund and construct enhancements to Pier 17 that will allow ship berthing on the eastern and northern sides of the pier, an estimated construction cost of $3.8 million. They've also agreed to install and monitor security cameras in and around the New Market Building site while the city is preparing for its next use and continue to fund and coordinate a public art display on the temporary fencing around the New Market Site. Finally, it is anticipated that an agreement between Howard Hughes Corporation and 32BJ regarding security will be reached in the imminent future. Next slide, please. So the next steps in the ULR process, and I'd be happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hinckley. Are there any questions from the commission with respect to this testimony? Commissioner Levin?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hinckley, for the explanation. I've got to say, the slide you showed that squarely has out the little green boxes that are the properties subject to lease and shows the large streets that continue to be retained to the city is very reassuring to me. It's picture is worth a lot of words in this case. I realize that's exactly what the application said you were doing, but the picture really helps. On, could I ask about unused development rights that may be associated with those properties? Are there any? And if so, will they continue, are they retained by, are they controlled by Howard Hughes under the lease or retained by the city?
Thank you for your question, Commissioner Levin. Currently, I know there's another ULR going on that involves the air rights, and this is separate, so I can't speak too in detail on that change. But the remaining air rights that won't be used in the 250 Water Street project will remain in the lease. Currently, Howard Hughes has control over 93.5% of the excess development rights, and the other 6.5% are the cities for the various, the open space. And so they'll be using some for the other ULR, but then the remaining will stay within the lease. Yes, that's how it's planned.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Hinckley. I understand you're the only one testifying on behalf of EDC on this item, correct?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Thank you. So we will now move to testimony. We have a number of people signed up. We will first go to those in opposition. The first speaker will be Paul Goldstein, followed by Diana Switches.
Thank you. I urge the City Planning Commission to vote down this application unless the city and Howard Hughes agree to implement urgently needed local improvements. I find it troubling that the city is willing to turn over a large and important part of our city to a private entity which largely operates with minimal and inadequate oversight by EDC or any other public agency. And since the existing lease runs for roughly 50 more years, and EDC has yet to finalize the terms of the proposed 99-year lease, this application is premature. And City Planning should ask that this item be delayed until we all better understand the final terms of this lease still being negotiated. I strongly recommend that City Planning carefully considers the conditions put forth by Community Board One. I will particularly mention a few that I consider most important. The entire east side of Lower Manhattan within CB1 has virtually no active recreation space in an area that has seen its residential population of families explode over the past 20-plus years. And while it isn't easy to create parks here, I do believe we have a few excellent opportunities to do so. The Brooklyn Banks area adjacent to and beneath the Brooklyn Bridge should be returned to the community since it did provide excellent active recreation space until DOT closed it about 10 years ago for a construction project promised to be completed in about two years. There is a groundswell of support to reopen that area to allow residents of both CB1 and CB3 to again enjoy this space that was not only a great skateboarding area, but one that allowed bike riding, basketball, volleyball, and other active recreation pursuits. The roof of Pier 17 was promised to the community by HHC to be a green open space. They showed us drawings that turf space would allow for soccer and other sporting activities. Instead, HHC has made the roof into a largely private area, restricted to the public unless they pay to rent a chair, buy a meal, or attend a concert. The roof of Pier 17 should be restored as community space with children in mind. The New Market Building Site should become a community center as originally recommended by both CB1 and the Downtown Alliance in the 2002 report. The site is now vacant, and the city should look at building that much-needed community center. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. Are there any questions from the commission? Okay, I see none, so we will be moving on to Diana Switchich, the next speaker, to be followed by Joanne Gorman.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Diana Sweet. Hi, I'm Director of Planning and Land Use at Manhattan Community Board One. I would like to read into the record the position of CB1 is captured in the resolution adopted on September 30, 2021. CB1 members have expressed that they do not sense the urgency for this application and maintain that the community should have been engaged earlier. CB1 opposes this ULR application for the disposition of Seaport properties unless the following conditions are satisfied. One, the public amenities and benefits should run for no less than the entire term of the lease. Two, the terms for use of the Pier 17 rooftop should be amended to allow for greater public access as originally envisioned. Three, additional active recreation space should be identified and built out, i.e. the Brooklyn Banks and dugout areas. Four, EDC and HHC should work with the Fulton Stall Market to expand to 10,000 square feet to fulfill the original commitment for a local and regionally sourced, affordable, and accessible food market. Five, the New Market Building Site should be rebuilt into a community center as originally requested by CB1 in prior resolutions. Six, EDC should spend the money paid to it by HHC only on Seaport improvements as opposed to putting this money into the general fund. Seven, the new lease should accommodate for future resiliency infrastructure, including that lease term should be renegotiated following the completion of the FIDIC Seaport Climate Resilience Master Plan, which will increase the value of the property being leased by HHC. Eight, EDC should investigate rent increases larger than the 3% proposed. Nine, EDC should remove unused development rights from the lease. Ten, there should be Ten, there should be a market reset on rent more frequently, potentially every ten years. Eleven, there should be a cost-benefit analysis for the consideration of public benefit now and in the future. Twelve, greening of open space under this lease should be prioritized, i.e. in the former street areas and all open space. Thirteen, the lease must accommodate access for all resiliency work. Fourteen, more maritime infrastructure should be incorporated for visiting ships and other potential active maritime uses. Fifteen, EDC should look more closely at the socioeconomic accessibility of the existing amenities within the seaport leasehold. And finally, sixteen, EDC and HHC should work together to ensure fair living wages and benefits for building service workers within the area of the lease. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the Commission? Okay, seeing none, we will move to the next speaker, Joanne Gorman, to be followed by Adrian Andy Sosin.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Joanne Gorman and I'm speaking on behalf of Friends of South Street Seaport. I am opposed at this time to extending the Howard Hughes Corporation marketplace lease out to twenty-one twenty. There are major concerns associated with current Howard Hughes plans. With over fifty years left on the existing lease, there is no need for the city to act on this lease extension in the absence of adequate information. A Howard Hughes internal document revealed its intent to sell its seaport assets as soon as it got necessary air rights and agency approvals in place. The Brooklyn Bridge Southeast Urban Renewal Plan will expire in twenty sixty-eight, removing important controls over future seaport development. This coming at a time when Howard Hughes has greatly expanded its lease interest in the seaport without any competition to counterbalance and promote equitable public partnership. Howard Hughes promotes its tower as one that will replace a parking lot with both market rate and affordable housing, retail, and other uses, include construction jobs, permanent full- and part-time jobs, and of course, save a museum. But a building within the existing zoning envelope and maximum height of one-twenty feet in no way precludes any of the above, and it would not come at the cost of undermining an historic district, undermining city planning, exploiting public assets, and promoting a deceptive museum funding that is anything but a developer contribution. There was no attempt to analyze the current economic environment that might prove that an as-of-right build may be even more appropriate today where a glut of high-end residential units are being held back from the market and the office work environment post-COVID is undergoing a real change. What is the point of city planning if a developer can conjure up a contrived development mechanism, incorporating streets that were demapped for public benefit in order to override existing regulations regarding ownership, adjacency, transfer of city-owned air rights, and protection of public assets? A coordinated city hall effort preset to push the Howard Hughes proposals through city agency approvals will not end with the close of the related ULC process for Two-Fifty Water, just voted on by City Planning and an expected done deal in City Council. With that as preface, I will now urge you to deny no less than a city disposition application for consideration at a more appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gorman. Are there any questions for Ms. Gorman from the Commission? Okay, thank you. We will hear now from Adrian Andy Sosin, to be followed by Linda Roche.
Good morning. I hope you can hear me. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My testimony is in opposition to the Howard Hughes ULC application, particularly the extension of leases to support properties. I don't think this is a timely application and I think that their attempt at Two-Fifty Water Street to build over the height limitation is what's motivating this attempt. They are trying to sell oligarchs expansive views in what has been characterized as vertical investment properties and attempting to demap streets to justify their air rights transfer. I believe that this will create another situation currently similar to the situation of Hudson Yards where a single developer is the FIF holder of an area in New York City. I don't think such a lease extension is in the long-term interests of the city of New York, particularly at this time. It's one part of the scheme instigated by HHC, which is a Texas-based corporation, to have New York City subsidize the privatization of public assets and it's aided by city officials at the EDC who I might say historically have been seeking their next jobs through the revolving door supplied by real estate developers and are now pressing for rezonings that will eviscerate historic districts all over New York City. We are the people who live and work here. I've lived in the seaport area and in South Bridge Towers since nineteen seventy-six. I don't accept that the Howard Hughes Corporation, with its history of secretive deals and reneg promises, is worthy of trust. Except for this HHC to transfer air rights to Two-Fifty Water Street, there is no need to extend the lease at this time when over fifty years remain on the current lease. The history of duplicity with the city and Community Board One has been exposed by foil documents showing how its currently leased properties at the South Street Seaport have not benefited the city, including the fact that HHC paid no taxes to the city last year. So why are they seeking another ninety-nine-year lease? It's been found that the Brooklyn Bridge Southeast Urban Renewal Plan will expire in twenty sixty-eight and expiration of those regulations will remove controls over development at the seaport and Howard Hughes will be without any competition to counterbalance its quest for profits or any incentive to promote equitable public access. Hedge funder Bill Ackman, the HHC major shareholder, has no interest in cities in New York City's history or in its residents. Their
Thank you. Your time is up, Ms. Sosin. Thank you very much. If you have written testimony, please feel free to submit it. Thank you. Okay, next, any questions from Ms. Sosin? All right then, thank you. And our next testifier will be Linda Roche, to be followed by Mark Bozek.
Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Linda Roche and I am a forty-three-year resident of the seaport area. I am opposed to the ninety-nine-year lease extension to Howard Hughes. But first, I would like to say how disappointed I am that the Commission has just approved five amendments for Two-Fifty Water Street without one comment or question. I wish that the Commission, the city agencies paid, had more, wanted to get more into the weeds of this stuff because the community is not happy. If you haven't noticed, Howard Hughes is rushing through many amendments in order to get the city agencies approvals before current elected officials leave. Why? Because they know they will not succeed once new city officials who actually care about the city's history and what is legally allowed to be built in the seaport area. And I mean, why not wait to approve until we know the full extent of the Howard Hughes plans? The Seaport Coalition received over ten thousand petitions opposed to the Two-Fifty Water Street application. I beg you to please listen to the community who cares about the historic legacy of this area. City Planning Commission should represent the community, not greedy developers and not the elected officials. Please vote no on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Roche. I will just comment that the Commission has given a lot of thought to Two-Fifty Water Street. The fact that there were no comments at the vote is not indicative of a lack of a robust consideration by the Commission. Questions from the Commission? Commissioner Levin?
Yeah, I was actually going to cover exactly the same topic with a comment, not a question, which is to say that in fact, the weeds are very thoroughly laid out in the report that we just approved. I urge this Roche and the community to go take a look at it. We may not have settled on those issues in a way that is to your liking, but I assure you, we've given them all very careful thought.
Commissioner Bernie?
And just to point out that I did actually vote against the Two-Fifty Water Street, so it wasn't entirely without debate and discussion and all issues were fully aired.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right, we will now hear from Mark Bozek, to be followed by Trevor Holland.
Good morning. This is Mark Bozek here. And as a recent tenant of the seaport at Twenty-six and Twenty-two Fulton Street, where we launched the Bill Cunningham Experience in Live Rocket Studios, and having spent the last forty-five, fifty days here every single day staying at the Hampton Inn because I live on Long Island and walking at five o'clock in the morning to get here and seeing the seaport come alive every single morning, literally for every single day of the last two months, there's been approximately ten thousand people that have been to the seaport since we opened the Bill Cunningham Experience. And I would venture to guess, half of them had not been down here for a long time. And the conversation always ends up being something to the effect of, yeah, no, I didn't come down, I haven't been down here. And I used to come down here in the eighties when you could get drunk and smell the fish and the mafia as soon as you got off the subway. And the idea, frankly, of hearing these conversations, and I said this on the Two-Fifty Water Street, it sounds like we're a PBS special from nineteen seventy-seven where COVID didn't happen and people are malign because Bill Ackman is a notorious guy that he doesn't care about the city. He was here the other day and he very, very much cares about the seaport and he very much cares about the city. And the amount of barriers and walls that have to be put up to show progress in this beautiful town. I mean, people cannot believe what they see when they enter on Fulton and Water Street and walk over to the seaport. I'm super mindful of legalities and perceptions that the big bad guys from Texas are here and doing it, but it is so not the case. And their receptiveness and their support of creating newness and life and what we're trying to do is create, attract people to come to the seaport is progress. It's not about some big bad corporation being maligned and using that as a really frankly tired excuse that they're going to come in and prevent the public. The public is loving it here. They're loving it at the restaurants that the seaport doesn't even own, that I eat at almost every single night. And I just think it's something that must be approved and I'm wildly in favor of it, much more so than I would be if it was what it was before. And I've met a lot of the neighbors that have been here. In fact, they've all come, a lot of them have come into the experience. I've invited them to that because it's about this reopening up of New York that the seaport is very much taking a part of. And the amount of people that have come through here because of Live Rocket and because of some of the other people we've gotten here has been tremendous and they love it. And so I, again, I'm respectful of all the comments, but I don't think that that should get in the way of progress and to perceive them as a reason to say no that they're big bad guys that are taking away public this and public that, I think is misguided. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bozek. Are there any questions from the Commission? Seeing none, thank you very much. Next up is Trevor Holland, to be followed by Marianna Amma James.
Good morning. My name is Trevor Holland and I've lived on South Street on South Street for the past twenty-four years. In fact, I live directly down the street from the seaport and have visited this area for at least the last forty years. And although I've seen many improvements to this waterfront, it's been painfully slow and frustrating. I know that many of you on this commission are probably unaware of the conditions on the east side of Manhattan's waterfront. But take a ride along the bottom of the U of Manhattan, you will see the stark difference between the east side and west side, especially when it comes to quality open space. When you're viewing any ground lease extension, I'd imagine that you take a look at several important factors. Do they support our nonprofits and social providers? Have they improved the area? Have they invested in our neighborhood? Have they provided a long-term vision? And will they be an effective steward? I do know that throughout the pandemic, Howard Hughes has supported various community organizations delivering much-needed food and PPE, especially to hard-hit, low-income buildings. I do know that they have invested in and improved the area. I do know that they will steward this area. I'm especially pleased to learn that they would be taking responsibility for revitalizing a portion of the East River Waterfront Espinade that has been neglected for decades. This critical project will bring important new public space amenities that we desperately need for our families and will also address the issue of equity. Ironically, the last time I spoke here, I was expressing my concerns with the proposed super two bridges mega towers just up the block. Four mega towers with nearly four million square feet, including one cantilevering super tall, each at least seventy stories high. I actually asked for this commission to include investments in the same waterfront Espinade area. Despite the many calls from the community, this commission, which clearly had the power with restrictive declarations, did not require any investment at all in the waterfront Espinade area. Zero, zero. And all those mega towers are proposed for the South Street fronting the Espinade. So while I do believe supporting this ground lease will allow for key investments in our community as well as providing an anchor and a beacon for true waterfront planning, I would like the commission to consider one issue. The two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar Espinade payment with CPI increases is supposed to be earmarked for the Espinade. However, we have recently learned that these Espinade payments do not go necessarily to the Espinade. We ask the commission to require any Espinade payments to go directly towards maintenance, security, and programming of the entire Espinade in terms of equity with no dollar reduction from EDC. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Holland. Any questions from the Commission? Okay, seeing none. The next person up is Marianna James, to be followed by Powell Brzezinski.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. For full disclosure, I am a Community Board Member, Community Board One member. I'm speaking on my own behalf, though, and I am typically somebody who is not in favor of the privatization of public land or public institutions. However, I am here to speak in favor of Howard Hughes this morning and the expansion of their lease. As of the twenty-ten census, there were only two percent black people living in this district, the entire district, not just the east side. I am a lifelong resident of South Bridge Towers. My parents moved here when I was three months old. My grandfather was one of the builders on the Twin Towers, one of three black builders, and my uncle worked for Tishman. And so my father found out about it. He was in the service and so he was welcomed. He was in the Air Force and he was welcome to apply. He bought this co-op back in nineteen seventy-one. And there were a few other black families, you know, Afro-Caribbean, Afro-Latino, and a couple more Afro-American, but the number hasn't increased much since then in nineteen seventy-one. There's been, over the years, different reasons alleged as to why that is, such as only publishing the lotteries and certain newspapers so that only certain people would see them and things like that. I don't know if that was the case, but I can attest to the fact that not many black families ever moved in or live here today. And again, that's only two percent in the entire district. So that is a major reason why I support the affordable housing and the project in general. In addition to that, Howard Hughes has been a tremendous racial and social justice ally, particularly during the pandemic, dispersing food and supplies to people in need and communities in need, including South Bridge Towers, when South Bridge Towers asked for food for its seniors. Also, yeah, I support, again, as I am a Community Board Member, I have voted for the amenities that Diana Sweetag spoke to and Paul Goldstein spoke to, and I support those as well. But I don't think that that should mean that Howard Hughes should not get this extension. And I find it weird that many of the same people who argued that Howard Hughes is probably not going to remain at the seaport, they're probably going to leave as soon as they get the permission, would also be opposed to them applying for an extension. Are they going to leave and remain for additional years? It's weird. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. James. Are there any questions from the Commission? Now, thank you for your testimony. We will hear now from Powell Brzezinski, to be followed by Michael Kramer.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you. I am representing Paul Hobbitts and I would like to read his testimony. My name is Paul Hobbitts, retired vice-chair of Community Board One, advisory board member Downtown Hospital, board member of Manhattan Youth, resident South Bridge Towers for thirty-seven years. I support the extension of HAC ground lease in the seaport. Before Pier Seventeen was rebuilt, the seaport was a ghost town. HHC brought life, jobs, and renewed activity to our seaport and our community. HAC brought life, jobs, and renewed activity to our Seaport and our community. Eleven years ago, our school, Spruce Street School, was in need of fundraising. The Taste of Seaport was born. HAC provided funding each year since in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. Now this event includes our PEX slip school as well. Community support extends to our Bower Mission, our hospital, and our South Street Seaport Museum, centerpiece of the historic district. The proposal before us provides for all the above as well as the desperately needed affordable housing. Six years ago, South Bridge Towers voted to exit the Mitchell Lama program for private ownership. This removed 1,651 middle-income affordable housing units from our district. Our children live in a diverse world and need to be need to benefit afforded by that diversity. This lease extension is smart for all parties. It will allow Howard Hughes to move ahead with real planning for the Seaport and New York City, resulting in support for our arts and cultural entities, including the Seaport Museum. HAC has invested $1 billion in our community. They've shown that their intent is tied up with mutual benefit for locality in the total. We sink or swim together. Please give them the tools they need to accomplish our goals. Respectfully submitted, Paul Hobbit.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the Commission? If not, thank you very much for your testimony. We will now hear from Michael Kramer to be followed by Linda Hellstrom and then Jay Hellstrom.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Michael Kramer. I'm testifying on behalf of the Seaport Coalition and we join with Manhattan Community Board One in opposing this application. According to this app portal page, this application should be treated as a type-one action which requires CEQA compliance. Neither the 250 Water EIS nor any other CEQA document conducts environmental review of the proposed fourth amendment of this lease. Because CEQA compliance has not been completed, the City Planning Commission cannot vote on this application. The ULA process should be restarted once there is a proposed lease and that lease has undergone environmental review. How can city planning take a vote to approve a lease that's still under negotiation? The proposed zoning actions are not feasible because the zoning resolution prohibits a large-scale general district that uses the DMAP streets, even though you voted for it earlier. The proposed project will not provide the purported benefit of funding for the South Street Seaport Museum, though HAC's development rights purchase because through the HAC's development rights purchase, because the city charter section 109 prohibits that proposed funding mechanism. So why now? Will this new lease be assigned to a prospective buyer waiting in the wings? Has the EDC done a cost-benefit analysis to measure the value of community benefits offered now and again in the future that are commensurate with the value of the lease? Why not more frequent and higher market rent resets? Why is Titanic Park listed as this work has already been funded by the Parks Department? What benefit does the public receive from a 10-year lease to the Fulton store market when they correctly have refused to accept less than a new 10,000 square foot space at 133 Beekman? Didn't the city already waive payment of trans-lux building rent for a public market use? What benefit does the public receive by fixing the land north of Pier 17 before it is buried underneath a coastal resiliency Seaport shoreline extension? The public benefits that the SBS application purports will result from its disposition of Seaport properties under a 99-year lease are illusionary and will not occur. We ask our commissioners to act in the public interest by requiring a full CEQA review and to restart the ULA once there is a proposed lease. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kramer. Before I ask the Commission if there are questions, I will just note that this disposition was in fact considered under the 250 Water Street EIS. So it has been fully considered. Are there any questions from the Commission? If not, thank you again for your testimony. We will now hear from Linda Hellstrom to be followed by Jay Hellstrom.
I am opposed to this application as well. And I appreciate these people that are excited about the Seaport. I too am. I live here in the third oldest building in the the historic Seaport. And it will literally not exist as they wish it to be, this open space and air that everyone was talking about. It will look instead like Wall Street and you don't see people wandering casually around Wall Street. And somebody else said about looking at the weeds. The Commission said that they have looked at the weeds. I think there's one weed that they might not have looked at. I was listening to the discussion by the Commissioners on Monday regarding the application. And even though it's already been approved, I think that they were discussing, several Commissioners mentioned that the LPC had approved this plan as far as the mass and scale. And they agreed with that assessment that the LPC made. So then it hit me. You as Commissioners were relying on LPC regarding this matter. And LPC viewed the slideshow that HOM's Mr. Cooper presented several times. At those presentations, they saw and considered a slide directly addressing this issue of mass and scale, a slide that was in the LPC presentation, but I don't believe was in the presentation, do you? It was labeled "Establish mid-scale massing on Pearl Street" and showed the Howard Hughes Building in its setting in relation to the buildings of the South Bridge Towers behind it. This slide shows the HAC Building much smaller than the SBT Buildings behind it, when in fact, South Bridge Towers' three highest buildings are all 250 feet. And the HAC Building in the slide is 345 feet tall. This slide is actually false and was doctored using a certain perspective technique in order to show it this way. It was deliberate, not just a mistake, and much more than a minor misrepresentation. It's a difference of 75 feet and a swing of much more than that. And labeled to show mid-scale massing, which means midway between the Seaport District and the buildings behind it, which makes it specific to mass and scale. It also now is something that you all discussed on Monday as appropriate to the Seaport. You cannot rely on a Commission's determination of that when they looked at and relied on the depiction as accurate when it wasn't. And you cannot therefore say scale and mass is appropriate just because the applicant says so. So this is who you're dealing with with LPC with this next discussion that you're having and this next vote. You should know who you're dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hellstrom. And I will just simply note on behalf of the Commission that we weigh the appropriateness of height and scale independently and do not rely only on what another city agency advises in that regard. Are there any questions from the Commission? Okay, thank you. Next up is Jay Hellstrom to be followed by Lorna Novy.
Can, he is here in the same house, obviously. He belongs, he's my husband. He's on another phone call right now. Can you get back to him?
We can, we can have him go later in the order. There are only a few speakers still.
Thank you.
Okay, yes. Next up is Lorna Novy, followed by Alan Mill.
Hello, I'm Lorna Novy, the interim Executive Director of the Historic Districts Council. And I'd like to present a statement on behalf of the Council regarding 250 Water Street. As you may know, the Historic Districts Council is the advocate for New York City's designated historic districts and neighborhoods meriting preservation. Its Public Review Committee monitors proposed changes within historic districts and changes to individual landmarks and has reviewed the application. Publicly encountered components of the this application have improved immensely, meaning the first six stories of the new design. However, this does not change the fundamental issue of scale that is at the heart of this project, this debate, and most importantly, this historic district. Absent from this extensive restudy and submission is a survey of new construction within the historic districts since the time of designation. And a considered study and analysis of why those commission-based approved buildings are successful. Unlike those projects who became contextual neighborhoods in an architectural quilt work of old and new, this proposal and this applicant believe that we believe is an exception to the rule. This is not a Seaport-scale building and no matter how nuanced or considered the base of a building is, it is extremely difficult to hide a skyscraper. To this point, the skyscraper cannot hide here and that and therefore is an imposition. The elevations demonstrate how uncomfortable this building's height and massing truly is within the context. The Historic District Council looks forward to seeing a scale-appropriate proposal at future hearings and meetings. If it cannot be Seaport's size, perhaps it just doesn't belong here and the applicant should build the bulk they desire outside the historic district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you again. And we will move on to Alan Millman to be followed by Victoria Hellstrom.
Good afternoon. It seems like I've made it to the first afternoon presentation. My name is Alan Millman. And first of all, I'd like to compliment Bill Cunningham on his discussion about how how great the Seaport's been all the way back into the eighties. And I began to appreciate it as well. One of the major questions I have for everybody is what's wrong with profits? I mean, people who come in and invest their own capital are entitled to benefit from that that exercise. My name is Alan Millman. I support an extension of Howard Hughes ground lease at the Seaport. Many years has represented a key destination for me with my visitors of in the international marketing world. And all the visitors that would come here would eventually have a taste of the South Street Seaport. I was born and lived my entire life in New York City. And I've had several careers, including construction in hotel and hospital industry, as well as in international domestic travel, destination and marketing executive. In these capacities, I've had the occasion to travel large parts of the world where I either was involved in the development of destinations, facilities, and revival of down-run city areas. In these ongoing meetings that we have had here in New York, we've been laboring through this over the past year. We're hearing ridiculous reasons for objections to the building and expanding of what is a gem of a destination, entertainment hub in an area known for horrors, such as the killing of the young woman about a year ago. In most other places in the world, the government is a primary source of resources to upgrade economic development in depressed areas. Think London, Paris, Singapore, Tivoli in Copenhagen, as I mentioned before. And you may remember when Trump met with the North Koreans in Sentosa Island. I had been on Sentosa Island when they were swearing off any development and eventually realized how important a cargo would be in their destination marketing. Here in New York, we have a viable, generous, expertly managed company that has identified a financially viable project and is willing to invest its own capital. Over $800 million so far and counting. And people who will benefit most are trying to forestall the development for what appears to be ridiculous reasons. Prior to the arrival of Howard Hughes, the Seaport needed investment in long-term planning. But as we heard from many of these naysayers, who proudly state they have been on the board of directors for 60 years, have been founding members of the museum and board directors, et cetera, et cetera. So why have they not been able to fund the museum? Is it lack of support, bad management, or lack of interest? Now we have someone who's willing to and has shown evidence they have to put up over $800 million to develop this little jewel on the East River. In most of the other cities and countries I've observed, center-city destination development involves government and foundation investment. In this case, it's mainly private money corporate investment funds. We live in an entrepreneurial society where profit is the motivator for investment. Do you think this country would become the powerhouse that it is if the Wright Brothers waited for the fishermen on the beach to build a plane? Howard Hughes Corporation.
Thank you, Mr. Millman. Your time is up. We appreciate your testimony. Are there any questions from the Commission for Mr. Millman? If not, again, thank you. And if Mr. Hellstrom is available now, we can hear from him. Otherwise, that was the last speaker signed up. So if there are any other individuals who wish to speak.
I'm sorry, I I'm I'm signed up. I'm Victoria Hellstrom.
Okay, Victoria.
No worries. Thank you so much. Thank you, Commissioners, for hearing from me. I would like to say that we suffered very significant damage to our landmarks in Tribeca over the rebuilding of Lower Manhattan after 9/11. In our case, we suffered damage on 37 permits and two certificates of appropriatenesses that were falsified when the Greenwich Hotel went down three floors instead of one, failing to survey the surrounding landmarks for two additional lower levels of hotel space, where city inspectors falsified the records 192 times to date. Where the evidence is, these landmarks at 385 Greenwich, AKA 71 North Moore, dating back to 1805 and 1815, suffered this significant damage that we have now seen in the Meatpacking District to nine landmarked row houses. And so what I would like the Commission to consider very carefully is the damage. It's not a matter of what Howard Hughes would like to do. It's a matter of the damage to the surrounding landmarks and its residents. And why the Landmark Preservation Commission thought nothing of our historic districts are extremely, extremely troubling to everyone. These are our treasures. This is New York City. Paris and London would never do such a thing. We are in a position where these buildings could be left uninsurable as the Deutsche Bank Building, where the city just ignores the laws for the buildings in the surrounding area. The remedial work alone could destroy these absolute jewels of our history. And so I would like the City Planning Commission to really carefully reconsider what exactly it is that Howard Hughes brings to the table. There is no reason we can't save our museum without them. Quite frankly, they've come into our neighborhood and bought a piece of land. They knew what the restrictions were and they slapped us in the face. This is not good neighbors. It does not represent the arts. It does not represent our historic districts. And we would really hope that our Commissioners think very long and hard over what is going on in the Meatpacking District. That is what they are suggesting in the Seaports, where all of the residents are gone, all of the arts are gone, and it became a nightclub destination at the expense of losing these gorgeous buildings. I'm sorry, Commissioners, it's just wrong. And we really are looking for leadership in this country where our government officials.
Thank you, Ms. Hellstrom. Your three minutes is up. Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Hellstrom? Okay, thank you very much. And now we will go back to Mr. Hellstrom, if if he is available to speak.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you all, Commissioners. I assume, I may have, because of all the blank screens, I outlasted my three precious minutes of my life. As a resident of 375 Water Street, I appreciate your undivided attention and my respectful comments. I want you to consider not giving a 99-year lease to a company that goes back on its promises consistently, mismanages what they have, and has total disregard for we in our community. And I say that with a capital C. You represent me, for which I very much appreciate your fiduciary responsibility to me as a citizen in this city and more importantly, in the historic district, a gem within our city and internationally in renown. This area they control is, HAC, is just disregarding we as a community. I ask you to come see this area. They have let it run down, just as the Millsteins did with the earlier. And that's why we have a parking lot here that is so inappropriate to be considered to bust. to be considered to bust what we now know to be the historic district. No way that you should let an organization like Howard Hughes come in and disregard we as a community and you as members of a historic district such as this. They have a history of disregarding our district. They disregard our public. If I could take you through, as others have, and show you what they've done in 4th of July. What they're doing is roping off an area that unless I have a Visa card that's of a particular magnitude, that I can't get there. If I go above the zone, a guard stops me from going into the public area. You must look at these ingredients as you deal with this company. They've broken their promise on our green market. I am very, very concerned that we've spent hours as a community and yet they say this is evenly divided in our community. There's nothing further than the truth, except they've hired very expensive lobbying people and we've had hundreds submit, thousands in a petition. Please, please regard we as individual members of a community, not a Texas, not an Ackman billionaire project, which is driven by not what is good for our community, but how much money they can make. That's not your responsibility. Thank you for your time and all your effort.
Thank you, Mr. Hellstrom. Are there any questions from the commission? If not, is there anyone else present who would like to speak on this item?
There are no further speakers signed up on this item.
Well, if not, then this hearing is closed. Mr. Secretary, is there any other business before the commission today?
There is no other business, Chair Laramont. However, I do have a brief announcement to make to our audience. For those of you who were unable to or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by selecting this hearing on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal through DCP's webpage or by mailing your comment to City Planning Commission Calendar Information Office, 120 Broadway, 31st floor, New York, New York, 10271.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. This remotely held hearing is adjourned. Thank you.
Time is 12:16 PM.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody.